And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I note that there are numbers of individuals who are here tonight for various reasons, and some of those are at the very end of the published agenda. We obviously will take into account your presence, and we will move forward with shifting the agenda around in order to accommodate your busy schedules, or at least your time at home with a better air conditioner than we have here. So we'll just move forward with the approval of the meeting minutes that requires our vote, and is sometimes released to the public in other executive sessions that will not be released to the public at this time because they have to do with things that have been business-conducted in executive session. July 18th, we would look for a motion.
I'd move to approve the meeting minutes from July 18th.
We have a motion made to approve the meeting minutes published for July 18th. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have our meeting minutes for Monday, July 24th. You seek a motion?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from July 24th.
We have a motion made to approve the meeting minutes from July 24th. Do we have a second?
I'm not sure.
You were absent?
Yeah, which one was I? I thought it was the 24th.
You were absent from the 24th, correct?
That's right.
I will second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was the one to discuss the water issues.
Moving forward with the meeting minutes from Monday to August 21st. And I believe that, John, you will be abstaining from that, and so I seek a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 21st.
I move to approve the meetings, the minutes to the meeting in August 21st, 2023.
I will second that motion. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving along, we have some executive session meeting minutes from August 21st. That again, John, you were absent from that meeting, so you will be abstaining, I assume. I seek a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes from August 21st, 2003.
I move to approve the executive session meeting minutes for August 21st.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session meeting minutes from August 21st, 2003. These would not be for release, correct?
That'd be correct.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, it looks like we cleaned the decks of our meeting minutes. I'm going to, I guess, just, you know, I don't think there's, I think more people are here for things that are actually on the agenda later, so I think I'm going to move, and we'll do public comment subsequent to some, going through some of the things that I know people are here for. So I'm just going to jump down for what I think will be a quick update on where we are with the Old Reservoir Dam situation, and when we'll be setting a hearing, and why we haven't done it tonight because we're still waiting for the state to give us a date where they can be present. So Greg, do you want to bring us up to speed?
Madam Chair and Board members, I did speak with the engineer who's handling a project on behalf of the state, and they are quite willing to come out in an evening, an attendant evening meeting with the board. So the engineer will be here, and also the state officials from dam safety will be here also. I did ask that before they, they come to any meeting, they go out and conduct their field visit, and they were agreeable to doing that. So the dates that they offered were September 28th, August, assuming October 2nd, 3rd, or 5th. And they're available on any of those dates.
Okay.
Is that for the evening meeting?
Evening. It would be an evening meeting, yeah. We could schedule it in the evening.
Okay.
So if you can check your calendars, what might work best for you.
Okay. So the 28th is on a Thursday, it looks like?
It is.
Okay. And then October 2nd is, that would be a select, wouldn't it?
It would be a selectmen's night, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so that's a selectmen's meeting. Maybe we should, do you think that would be too much business?
I do.
Okay, so we should do it on a different kind of night?
I'm not available on the 28th.
You're not available on the 28th? Available on the 28th?
As of right now, yes.
Okay.
That could change.
How about, Greg, would you be available on the 3rd?
3rd or the 5th are fine for me.
3rd or the 5th? Do you can tell that I have no life, the 3rd or the 5th is fine with me?
Me too.
Even the 28th?
Me too. They're all, they're all fine with me.
The 5th, I'm anticipating a master plan meeting that night, but we could be able to...
Are we saying that the 3rd is probably the best right now?
Yep.
Okay.
3rd works well.
So can we make that for October 3rd?
We can, and we can post it. Is it 6:00 PM? Is it convenient time for the board?
It's a convenient time for us. Can the state be here at that time?
I believe they can.
6:00 PM, convenient for most people here?
6:00 PM?
Yes. Which will be the public hearing, and it will be on October 3rd, and the state will be in attendance, and hopefully before that date, they will have gone out onto the site and done some preliminary work so that they can speak to the, some of the issues that people have.
I think it's going out to the site says a lot more than looking at photographs. When you look at photographs, you don't have an idea of the scale.
Yep. And I hope that you will establish a date and a time where the board can either join the state on the, you know, in trudging around out there, or pick a date when we can sort of get out there.
I've asked one of the neighbors who's kind enough to offer his services in getting the board to the location the next two Mondays and Tuesdays. So if there's one of those Mondays and Tuesdays, I've not heard back from him. So if there's any of those dates that are troublesome for you, I'm waiting to hear back because he would be willing to get out there and take the board out there.
Okay.
I spoke to a landowner right near there, and he's going to take me out on Friday, so.
And that was the 3rd, October 3rd?
October 3rd, we will have the public hearing. When we will actually be on site to go look at the property, I don't know when that's going to be yet. Right? You're going to do it Friday?
I'm going to go out on Friday, so at least I know.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I haven't been there.
Okay.
Never been there.
Nor have I.
And the neighbor that I talked to is quite willing to shuttle you down because to really get onto the dam, you have to cross the stream. It's easy if you're in a UTV, tougher to do if you're on foot.
Sounds like a plan.
So I'm waiting to hear back.
There's no workman's comp on this job, right?
Not that I know of.
So some people would like to say, "Too bad about Marshall."
Well, if you're real brave, you can skip across the rocks.
Okay. Well, I'm brave, but...
You can, you can do it.
I hope not stupid.
You just got to watch yourself.
Okay. So are we, are we all, this, I know you came out for, you know, maybe a little more dialogue, but this is what we have at this point. We're trying to get the state on the ground so the questions that you have can be, you know, hopefully answered from their perspective.
Do they just want to go by themselves, or they want people to go with them, or they...
I would suspect they'll go as a group, and maybe they'll allow us to tag along, but I don't think they're seeking a citizen group.
Yeah, and they haven't given us a date. I did express to them the concerns about the spillway and the breaching of the spillway, where the state reports indicate that the spillway is partially breached. I went out there, looked like more than a partial breach to me, but what am I now?
Yes, Mr.?
As part of the same process, I was hoping maybe we could get with the Water Commission and possibly do something with the Barry Town Reservoir Dam as well, that is significant risk. I was thinking if we could roll up all of this dam project stuff into one thing, we may be able to...
Where is this, is this the dam we're talking about, or is this a different location?
This is, this is the one on Pleasant Street.
This is the one on Pleasant Street.
It's a town water supply reservoir dam. It's a 300-foot...
Yeah, but that doesn't supply the town at all.
I do think it's still part of the water system. It's posted water supply, no trespass.
Well, I think that they go down there and do what, some due diligence, but I do not believe any particular citizen has water from, you know, potable water from that, from that dam.
Either way with that, there's going to be a limited amount of money available, and I think we should probably try to devote things at once because this one is at significant risk, according to their reports.
Well, that may be, we should discuss that with the state when they're out here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Because we would like...
Greg could have pulled that up in two minutes himself, but I just thought I'd have it ready because whoever goes to the DPW Commission, the Water Commissioner meetings would have a summary of what the state is saying.
Yeah. That's, that's the three, three of us and the four of us.
Yes.
Go to the DPW meetings.
Thank you.
Mr. Anders?
Yes.
I might add, I'm happy to see you here and looking so well.
I'm alive still.
Well, I thought you looked a little better than just alive.
Just barely below alive.
Okay.
I'm wondering if Greg took any photographs when he was down there and witnessing? If he did, we could put those online.
I did not take any photographs. I do have photos, however, from the state report. I think they might be a year or two old. The challenge is the scale is, it's hard to imagine when you're out there, there's a lot of debris down across the spillway. Mark, I don't know if when you're out there, if you can take any photographs?
Yeah, I can, sure.
That would be, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if we could place that online.
Yeah, we could do that. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. Okay. Again, thank you for being, for being here. Thank you for adding more work to us. We're very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
And, but while they're out here, we may as well take some time to ask them that question.
And I'm trying to save some taxpayer money in the future. We could roll it into one effort.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. I believe that we do have the superintendent of schools here from the Quabon Regional School District who will be having a conversation with us about new building operating procedures and induction, and introduction to that. And certainly, I would, I would say that the buses rolled, the kids, the kids went someplace. They were happy.
Very happy.
They're not happy this week, I understand, since it's quite, it's quite warm in the buildings, but we wish you well in your, on your new school year.
Thanks.
If you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, so I'm Colleen Milan, the interim superintendent of schools. Thanks for having me. I have like two really short additional things. So we have embarked upon a Chilla project, which you guys talked about at your annual town meeting in the spring. I just wanted to let you know that we voted the terms of borrowing to be at the five-year mark. And also, it was raised that the way we were borrowing, that we typically borrow within our regional school agreement, maybe didn't fit this project for two reasons. One, because it was a smaller amount of money, and two, because of the five towns, two of the towns were paying ahead. They were going to pay upfront in full. That left three towns that would pay over the five-year term limits. So with the way we apportion our funding through our regional agreement, the two towns that were paying ahead would have their terms or their amounts decided as of October 1 of last year. And the other three towns would have a fluctuating rate based on enrollment over the course of the life of the loan, which normally makes sense because all five towns typically borrow on a large project. Because this one was smaller, there was concern raised from the towns that had to borrow that that did seem equitable and fair. If their enrollment went up or went down, then the two towns that were paying ahead didn't have that factored in. So we sought legal counsel on that. They agreed that it could be problematic. So they recommended an intermunicipal agreement, which we have drafted, they have approved. We have to do one more vetting with another legal counsel, and then we will need to get all five towns together and the school committee to sign off on it. You're my fifth select board meeting, so I can tell you that all the other select boards seem to be on board with this intermunicipal agreement. And I want to be really clear, it would only be for this one project, not precedent-setting for the life and duration of that particular loan. So if you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer them.
I mean, it makes an awful lot of sense because then everyone is, you know, sort of whipped with the same, you know, lash. Because if your enrollment goes up, it'll, you know, charge, you know, you'll charge it differently. If it goes down, and so that would be the fairest way to do it. And if the intergovernmental services agreement is the legal way to get that done, I certainly feel that that's, you know, we're moving in the right direction. I don't have a problem with, and I know that regional agreement, so I know exactly. I know exactly.
Yeah, so it seems like this is the only time we've had a situation like this, and we don't anticipate it happening again. So that's that. And the second thing I wanted to share with you is just that we encountered, we're always trying to improve and learn and grow, but we encountered a situation in one of our schools where the town had entered into a greener community grant.
Thanks very much.
So they were doing some work in one of our elementary schools, and the school wasn't in charge of or overseeing that work, but rather it was a partnership with the town and the vendor. And we had a situation where the vendor was letting into our building, something happened, where they stepped on basically like a sprinkler head. Kevin Clark's not here, he'd probably be upset with me if I had the wrong term, but anyways, water got all over the building, and our fire department was unaware of it, the school was unaware of it, and we had a bit of a problem on our hands. And we realized that we needed a different protocol for communication, and any time that these projects happen in our buildings with our towns. So this is just an attempt to have really, if you think of the idea of like a pre-construction kind of meeting, saying that the towns and the school will get together, we're going to determine together the scope and sequence for the work, who's responsible for what. We will always try and schedule it when our staff is available to be there. They have the expertise and the knowledge of the building, they know if something goes wrong, where the shut-off valves are, different things like that. And also we would be sure to include our police and fires so they have a heads-up. We have emergency contacts posted on the building. So again, you're my fifth town, but each time I've brought this to towns, they've offered some suggestions and feedback, so we're going to give that to look at. And if you have any suggestions or feedback, we're happy to incorporate that, and then this will just be our procedures kind of moving forward.
Thanks. Any questions?
No, I think any opportunity to improve communications before any project gets started are, you know, important steps to take and have a plan in place for, and certainly read through this.
Yeah, like I said, less learned.
Yeah.
And so we're just looking to get better.
And certainly, while we have you here, Colleen, certainly I for one, and I know many others within the community, thank you very much for stepping up. It was an open position that's very difficult to fill with high-quality people. You had been sort of in the deputy superintendent's, you know, position for a number of years. I know it probably wasn't what was on your, you know, Christmas wish list to become the interim superintendent, but I thank you for stepping up, and I thank you from the, from the town's perspective because your presence here this evening says you care about, you care about what you're doing, and I'm just so pleased to have you there.
Thank you. I'm fully committed, and so far, I'm having a great time.
We'll fix that. We'll fix that, Colleen.
We'll talk in May.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to, have we got anybody else here for any specific thing that's on the agenda? Think, do we have someone here from the Council on Aging issue?
And also, item 5K.
5K?
Request for use of town property.
For taxpayers?
Taxpayers Association.
Okay. So why don't we go right along to the Council on Aging appointments? I believe Mr. Art Ritchie is here, and also Margaret Leahy, and so forth. So why don't you bring us up to speed on the situation, unless you would like to do that, Greg?
So the Council on Aging presently has at least two vacancies. Both individuals that are here this evening had previously come in and expressed an interest in serving on, as members, full members of the Council on Aging. As you know, the Council on Aging bylaw requires that they hold an annual meeting, and the purpose of the annual meeting is to elect their officers, which is the chairman, vice chairman, and the clerk for the upcoming year. And I believe, according to the bylaw, that's supposed to be the first Wednesday of September.
Yes.
So this would be, would be timely. And I believe if you talk to these individuals, they both have something to offer that I think would be helpful to the town.
Okay. So your, your recommendation is then that we, we take care of these appointments this evening so that on the first Wednesday of the month, which is tomorrow, they can do something?
I think, I think it's critical because one of the problems that the Council on Aging has had is getting a quorum.
Gotcha.
And having new members will help them achieve a quorum.
Okay. John, questions?
No, I, I think it's appropriate to get some appointments done. I think there will, if my math is correct, we'll still have a few open positions on it even after that, so we can work on getting that advertised. As you guys know, I've been working with Sandy to work on a new sort of system for appointments and reappointments, and been looking at what other towns do. We're still working on that, and we kind of ran out of time for this year, but we should have a good system in place going forward. So we're still, we're still updating that, but I think this is something that needs to get done, you know, with the, I know also on here are the reappointments, and that's something we need to wrap up at this point for this, for this year.
I'll do on that, John. Just one clarification, Greg. The, what does the number of board members?
Nine.
Nine. I just want to make that clear.
So the bylaw is clear, we have a nine-member committee.
Yep.
There was an article that was submitted to town meeting that was going to provide for seven members split between Barry and...
Hardwick, because of the use of the facility.
And that article was passed over, so the default is back to nine members.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that because there was a lot of questions on that.
And they're nine-membered just from the town of Barry?
That's right.
Gotcha.
So I would...
I may. I believe there will be four openings on the board, not counting us, because two people have not been replied, Linda Payne and Bernie Miller, I believe are the two, which now leaves four openings. If we get appointed tonight, it would be two openings, back to that. There's also a question about, and I don't know if you want to wait on this, but there's some confusion about whether selectmen support the, the merger between Hardwick and Barry. See you, Sanders.
I do. That's personal. I mean, they...
Boards, merging the boards.
Well, the fact that they have an intergovernmental services agreement with us, that we share the facility, it makes sense. It's more cost-effective for our town to do that. But as far as merging of the boards, we would look, I would, I would ask the board that presently exists to talk to us about it, you know, so that when we, if we go to town meeting with that recommendation, or not recommending it, we have a reason why.
Yeah, I think, I think we're certainly, I also support sharing the facility and, and working together on that as we've been doing. I think we would need a lot more information before supporting merging the committees together necessarily. I think we would need more information on that.
The main thing is you're not against it.
Oh, no.
The way it is right now. You'll need more information to make a definite response, but not against it.
No.
That's the rule up there.
Oh, no. Oh, no, I'm not against it.
I want to clarify that, so we can work with that.
Yeah, I think there's a...
I know, we're absolutely not against it.
Yeah, I think there's just a good number of questions that would need to be answered as to how, how that would work, who, you know, as an appointed, you know, as an appointed committee, they're serving, you know, at, you know, through the select board essentially. And so how does that function then when it's made up of, you know, one organization reporting to two separate organizations? So it gets a little messy, and we'd have to make sure there are proper procedures in place. There's a lot that would have to be reviewed and understood better to, to make that happen. It's not, I don't think it's quite as simple as saying, "Now you're together," and, you know.
Well, I think you have two separate boards, then having to agree upon individual activities, the one we want to merge, so that makes it a lot more difficult to have things happen, I think, personally, but if people came together, we could find a way of allocating seats on the board, whether, I mean, by population.
Well, population or percentage of what they pay for the bill. They, they pay 25%, I'm making this up now. 25% of the bill. Maybe they should have 25% of the seats. Okay, that would, to me, but of course, you guys need to have a conversation about that and make a presentation to us that makes sense to you.
And what they pay is based on how they check in, then how's the check-in system set up?
Yeah.
There's a lot of trickle-down that we need to kind of, turn hands around.
Okay. Sounds, sounds like you're interested.
There are questions that would need answers, that would probably lead to more, to more questions, but I'm sure we could eventually get there and have a good system in place.
And conceivably, the Hardwick board, or the select board, would have to know as well.
Yes, and I, and I believe that they have indicated a positive to it as well, because last year, at, before town meeting, there was conversation about, you know, yes, we should do this. And so they were, at least from their town administrator's position, she had indicated they were positively, you know, predisposed to this. But we didn't have enough information, so we just said, "Pass over it."
And there is an official agreement, and we seem to have trouble getting our hands on...
Yeah, I haven't found, I haven't found it.
Well, Hardwick may have it.
Who?
Hardwick may have a copy. Okay, then.
I called Hardwick, and I said that, they don't know where it is either, so where else could I go?
Well, I, I mean, it's got to be around somewhere.
I know.
The director should probably put her hands on it.
The Barry director?
Yes.
I already asked that.
Well, we'll keep, we'll...
I'll reach out to Hardwick.
Not the place to discuss.
I mean, at some point, if there's no agreement, we'll have to make an agreement.
We'll have to make an agreement.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's easier to create it than it is to fix something that's really bad. Okay. All set with that? And do we need a motion?
Yeah, I would move for the appointment, sorry, let me find my place, for Art Ritchie and Margaret Leahy Mc, Mark, sorry, I...
Mark Arrell.
Mark Arrell, to the, to the Council on Aging.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the appointments recommended in the agenda.
I seconded them.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the appointments as presented in the agenda. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seconded unanimously. Thank you for being here. We look forward to working with you.
And if you can...
Oh, good. Oh, good.
If you care to come by the office first thing tomorrow, we'll have your appointment slip so you can get sworn into office.
And...
Should be different.
Yes.
Okay, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you.
And the listing of the boards, perhaps?
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I know we're jumping around here, and I apologize for that. Why don't we go back to, I think, why don't we go back to the town administrator report? Sure, Greg? Sure.
Just a couple things. First is, we received a notice of appeal on the dog situation. There was the Michael Weatherby situation where he was cited for his dog being a nuisance, the matter's before the board a couple of times this spring. So the town has been enforcing the bylaw, which allows us to issue a civil citation. One was issued to him for the most recent complaints. The person has a right to appeal. He did appeal it, so there'll be a magistrate hearing will be represented on the 4th of October. But the, the plan is going forward that...
There will be a magistrate here, or we will have to attend.
We have to go.
Yeah.
We have to go, and it's at East Brookfield District Court. So again, the intent is to enforce the bylaw. The matter does not need to come back before the board because when there's a violation of the bylaw, the animal control officer is empowered to issue a civil citation, and that's what the plan is going for.
And she, and she will be present at the, with the magistrate?
She will be present. We've asked the individual, the neighbor, to be present also, and...
Will you be present, or will a member of the board, or what do you want to do?
Yeah, I think, I think it's virtual, so we, the good news is, we don't need to, we don't need to, we'll talk about it, but I want to at least let you know that that, that's happened. And then the second thing is, there's going to be an auction of public property in town. I don't know if you've noticed the signs about here and there.
Yep.
So there's two properties that are tax-foreclosed. One is located at 31 North Brookfield Road. I've got a picture of it. It is the garage that's located to the rear of the house that's located. The house is at 21. The garage is 31, so the garage is 26,000-foot building lot with the garage. And the second property is 259 Summer Street, which is a dwelling in disrepair, consisting of 3.9 acres. It's funny, I got a notice from the auction company today, deer butter. So if anyone's in a butter, they'll get notice of the auctions coming up. Those are my two things. Thank you.
Okay, and please to give our treasurer, you know, a pat on the back.
Yeah, he moved on it very quickly.
Working with the land court on that, and I know we have some properties up on West Street that will be soon to be presented to us, so we're happy about that. Anything else, Greg?
That's it, Madam Chair.
Is there any need to make a comment on what and when we may be holding interviews for the town administrator position?
Yeah, so the consultant had originally suggested something either the week of the 25th of September, and he suggested maybe an off-night of the board or a Saturday. So the question is whether the board, the, the date would be September 30th, if you wanted to do a Saturday meeting. I could indicate to him preferences for...
I definitely don't want to do a Saturday meeting, although I could get out of a commitment for that. Might work out for me.
So I'm, I should, I really want to be at this meeting, and I won't be here on the 25th and the 26th. I am back in Barry on, look at the calendar, on the 27th and 28th, so I'm here, but I'm not here on the 25th and 26th.
On the 30th, I can't do it.
Okay. But he also said that, you know, we could go into the following week if we wanted to, so...
Okay.
But certainly something that those two weeks, remember when he was here indicated that there were 11 people?
I know.
That they were considering. That was only two weeks ago.
Is he recommending that we, that we interview 11?
No, no. He's obligated to provide you with a list of finalists.
Yeah.
I've suggested that that number... I've suggested that that number is probably four to five.
Four to five.
Four to five, um...
So, that's, that's, and to do that in one evening or one day is a lot of time.
Unless you wanna start at 5:00.
I have no problem with starting at 4:00.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you wanna start earlier.
I mean, that's, John, I know it's sometimes difficult for you.
Uh, depends on the day of the week.
Is this open to the public?
Yeah.
Yes.
Public session. Yep, so the, the candidates' resumes are public record, and so when we post the agenda, we'll post the candidates' resumes.
And then what, what days were you looking at, the, that week?
So, the, so the week of the 20, the 25th would be the 27th to 28th, which is, uh, Thursday, Fri-, uh, excuse me, Wednesday, Thursday?
I could...
And then anytime the following week, although we already have a commitment with the Office of DM Safety, uh, on the third.
I could do 4:00 PM on the 27th.
Okay, 4:00 PM on the 27th?
Yeah, I'm also with them.
I, I could do 4:00.
I generally don't like going that early, but for this, it's a, I, I can understand it for this situation.
Yeah, so if we do 4:00 PM on the 27th, uh, we should be able to get through four candidates, uh, if, we're, we're five if we have to.
Yep.
Um, so, because we really need to get, uh, you know, these candidates will be less interested e- as each day goes by, so...
Yep.
Okay.
And then this will, would be recorded and available?
Yeah.
For the public to view?
Yeah, 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 probably it's public, it's, um, recorded, um, played back and...
Yeah.
Well, it will be live, so, I mean, anybody who has nothing...
I'm thinking for anyone who might wanna watch it later who's still working at 4:00.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, that sounds good. Any...
And the nice thing about interviewing all the candidates for comment on the same night is doesn't provide an advantage to someone who's on the second night.
Right.
Watch a video and see what your questions are all about.
True enough, true enough. Okay, um, any, anything else that anyone has to ask the town administrator while we have him on the agenda?
No, I, I spend a fair amount of time during every day, so I pretty much cover everything I need to do.
Okay.
I don't need to waste time here.
Uh, one thing that I, I would just like to, I know that the town administrator has received at least a verbal request that, um, we request that the depart, DPW meeting, um, which is for next, scheduling for next Monday, be held here.
Yep.
Where we can be, um, available to the public. I know we are going to do, I think, um, the, the final, you know, pop paving list.
Yeah.
I don't think we've actually voted the paving list.
So, that, the paving list is something we need to vote at select board.
Yeah, well, it'd be, it'll...
So, I, I asked Greg to put that on the next agenda. Uh, I was gonna mention this during select board reports, but, um, in talking with Greg, the paving contracts are going up for bid, I believe you said, in the next couple of days.
No, they're out.
They're, or the bid should come in.
They're out. I, I wanna say the, the bid opening is tomorrow.
Yep, so we should have a better idea of what the costs will be for each of the roads that we're looking at to see how we, which roads we can...
Right.
Work into the, the budget with what we have for chapter 90.
So, um, if you could make that formal request?
I will do.
That, that we would be pleased to, um, have the opportunity to have this in a more public, um, setting.
Yep.
Uh, and we can certainly apologize for the fact that we have only one place at this point in time, which is not unusual in communities where you have one place which is actually, you know, um, available for...
Fairly common.
Yeah, for recording, so, anyway, I'm hopeful that we can do that, uh, probably starting with John Chase to ask him, he is the chairman of the commission, and hopefully the commission would be agreeable to, um, getting together and holding the meeting here.
Here in this room?
Yes. Well, I mean, it's a...
I'm just not, I'm just not understanding, hopefully.
Well, it is the decision of the chair of that committee.
The chair of the committee. I'm not the chair of that committee.
Right.
Yeah, I, I get that.
Without us meeting and taking a vote on it, it would be up to the chair to make a decision to relocate it between meetings.
Is it a regular DPW meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, again, we go right back to the same old, with, uh, public meeting, uh, I mean, uh, it's supposed to be done here, we, we have a bylaw, this is the way it states that, Greg has actually asked before, so I don't understand why we're asking.
Well, we haven't been, we haven't provided a place for all of these weeks to take place. So, take tonight, for example, there's four meetings going on right now, so we haven't built in that infrastructure yet. Um, we haven't enforced it with any one particular group. Um, we're trying to at this point with public hearings. This is not a public hearing, so...
Those meeting tables open on the state's credit.
Right.
It has been in the past.
Right, and I think...
In this, no.
I'm, I'm not saying it shouldn't be here, I'm saying that we haven't been enforcing it across the board with all, you know, commissions and, and committees.
With bylaws and policies and whatnot, if, if we don't follow them, how do we expect the other departments to follow?
I, I get what you're saying. The point is, it's on the chair to make that decision.
I mean, I think...
It's on the chair if we fol-, if it's followed or not by that until we can force it otherwise, you know?
Agreed.
I think one thing that we all have to appreciate and understand, that as much as we think we're important to selectmen, we're not really. We're no more important than the commission, which has been established by state statute, and every one of those commission members are elected just as we are. They have as much power and authority when they're at the meeting, because remember, when we're out on the street, we have no power and authority.
No.
I can walk up to somebody and say, "Hey, I'm a selectman, I hope you, I hope you wouldn't laugh too loudly." But the most important thing is, I have no power and authority except if I'm here and, and at least one other person votes with me. Otherwise, and so when you say we have the authority to force them to do that, I wish we did, 'cause that would make life simple, but we really don't.
The bylaw doesn't, it doesn't allow for that?
Well, it doesn't. It just says that the boards will, um, uh, make every effort to blah, 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 pub- you know?
So, ultimately, the question is, what you're asking is, who's responsible for enforcing that? Because there was no enforcement built into that bylaw.
There's no enforcement.
So, the enforcement has to come from voters.
Yeah.
And the, uh, the voters who decide who's on these boards and commissions. So, we can push forward all we want, but if the chair of that commission doesn't change it, that's what it is until, you know, it's, when there is no other means of enforcement to that bylaw, it's on voters to recognize who is and is not following the will that they put forward at town meeting.
So, where, where...
So, so the bylaw does not single out the, um, the DPW commission?
No. It singles out every board and commission and committee.
I don't know, I think the bylaw needs to be read again.
Well, it just says, "Any board or commission should be," or, and so the...
It was originally put forward with a, a certain number listed, but it was changed on the floor before being adopted.
And the thing, and the thing of it is, there's, there's no way for, whether it be the select board, or, or say the commission wanted to have their meeting out, and we said, "No, we're not coming to that." I mean, no, there's no, there's no enforcement. People could say, "The enforcement is, Marshall don't, won't show up, then we're not gonna allow her to continue to be a selectman at the next election."
Right. I mean, I guess, I, I suppose, if the three of us decided not to go, maybe they wouldn't have quorum, but that's about the only card I could think of, and I don't know that that's the best option, because then if there is quorum, we don't have a voice there.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a realistic option.
It's frustrating. I, I concur that it's frustrating, and it would be easy to, um, you know, to, to welcome more people at...
I just don't think it's fair to the town.
It's not.
Taxpayers, that's all.
Well, it may not.
But we don't have the authority to force it to be fair.
We don't have the authority to, to fix it, and unless we, um, create some sort of a bylaw that, that vests in, in the select board, a level of authority that quite frankly we don't have.
And quite frankly, shouldn't have.
Yeah.
I don't think we should have the authority to dismiss people who've been elected into other positions for not following town bylaws. I think that's too much power for the select board.
What we should do is we make every effort to accommodate, um, you know, every board so that they have access to being, um, in a more transparent setting.
We need to make it as accessible as possible, and then it will become very clear to the people who vote who is and is not following the bylaw they put forward.
Or they can get, they can get together and put a different bylaw forward.
Right.
I guess. Um, okay, so...
Through the chair.
Rick, I had been listening and I had understood it previously. Would it be possible, it seemed to me when this bylaw was developed and voted on, there was, there were so many loopholes. Would it be possible to mass, uh, amend the bylaw?
Of course.
Or just, uh, it's not, it's not amended, it's, uh, remove it, whatever the term is, remove the bylaw.
Sure, at town meeting.
And establish a new one where someone has the authority to enforce the bylaw, because right now, we have so many different committees here. Nobody has this room but you guys at this time. Uh, I don't wanna list all the, all the, all the boards, or committees, or groups that could be considered needing this kind of a venue.
Yeah.
So, maybe in the, the next town meeting, we have a special town meeting, you could remove this bylaw.
I, I don't know if you can remove a bylaw voted at annual to, at a special. I don't.
I mean, I don't know if you can.
We, we could speak with council.
Yeah.
Town council about that.
We could speak...
We could speak with town council on what was the proper procedure.
Yeah, right. So, remove this in its entirety and rewrite it so that it works, so that we don't have two people, we don't have two presidents of this organization, of this town. Right now, we have a group called the selectmen, and then we have another group called the commission, and the commission doesn't necessarily...
Well, no, then you have the planning board, you have the conservation commission, you have all sorts of...
No, no, we're talking about these two commissions that are, that we're at odds with. We have always been at odds with this commission, that the selectmen have always tried to get the commission to come over here, and it never works out, it's never transparent. So, we need, we need to stop this, or else we're at, we're, we're just, I don't wanna use that word, because it's, it's just wasting a lot of time trying to find, trying to figure out who, who do you report to? Is the, does the commission report to the selectmen?
Let's see, let's see. Then you'll, then you'll have three different boards. You'd have the, okay, the DPW, okay, the highways, that's the selectmen's piece. Then you have the water commission. Then you have, okay, the, um, sewer commission. Those are entities that are voted by the public. I'm not in charge of them. I'm, I'm just not. The board is not.
The only authority over them would be voters and, I would say, State Ethics Commission. That's, that's pretty much it.
Well, that's over everybody, I mean...
Right.
But anyway, I don't wanna spend too much more time on this since it wasn't an agenda item. I apologize for bringing it up, but I just wanted to make the public, um, opportunity to ask Mr. Chase if he would be amenable to doing that, so during the discussion on paving roads, which is always a big issue for many people who are, you know, concerned about their situation. Um, select board reports. Uh, John, you have anything?
Uh, yep, the only other thing, um, aside from, uh, the paving stuff, uh, Mass DOT did come out a couple of weeks ago. I was able to meet with them along with Jason from the DPW, um, and we were able to go through different funding options, uh, different grant programs that are available. Um, there's, there's some that are applicable, some that definitely are not. We're not exactly, you know, a bottleneck situation. We don't have that kind of volumes of traffic, but there's a lot with complete streets and of course tip projects, well, transportation improvement projects, things along those lines. Um, so they did give us some good information on that, I believe. Greg, you got a copy of that information from them? Um, I think we do need to perhaps understand better who would be responsible for writing some of these grants, if that's something on the town administrator or on the DPW, uh, but that's something we need to kind of work out, but otherwise, I think there's some good opportunities for us to get some funding for, um, not just roads, but other multimodal, there were even some for, um, to, to help with transportation for, uh, seniors and people who are disabled for getting to, you know, different locations that don't otherwise have public transportation. So, I think there's some, some really interesting grants that we could be looking at, uh, going forward, trying to get some, some funding to help with some of the transportation problems around town.
Did you get any information on Route 62?
Yep, um, so...
This is like good information.
Yeah, um, so Jason, uh, he said that that is going to be part of, there, there's a program, uh, that MassDOT has been running, and we're already set for this one, and I believe it was either '24 or '25, the state is planning on funding the paving of that road for us.
And that includes Mechanic Street. That is like a miracle. It's a religious experience. I think that Mechanic Street might actually be, you know, be able to navigate it during the winter months.
Yep, so they've been working their way through the state on 62, and they just did Hubbardson, so we're, we're next on that.
And you, most of the time, they've never included Mechanics, the, the hill at South Bay stopped, and so supposedly this next, um, iteration, which could be next spring, starting next spring, will be, include Mechanic Street. So, that's good news for all of us.
Yeah, so I believe it's actually the same, uh, program that redid parts of, uh, South Berry on the numbered routes.
Okay, good news. Um, anything, you said you already had your reports. Uh, I would just, um, give you an update. We, uh, John and I have had the opportunity to meet with a couple of town, um, groups We, John and I have had the opportunity to meet with a couple of town groups about playgrounds and where we need to improve what we have. For example, up in the High Plains area, the Rice Park area, those have been left in disrepair, both of them. The kids play on them, but it's just a scary thing. So we do have money in our ARPA funds that we have, you know, allocated that we are going to fix playgrounds. And also later on the agenda, we will be, I will be at least talking to the, the board about the possibility of putting a common park bench replacement project going. We have a number of park benches that, my gosh, aren't even safe to sit on. We're trying very hard to have some of the, you know, the assets of our town well represented in the 250th. Okay? Our, our commons are, let's face it, really special. As towns go, really special. But with benches half broken and falling down, and it's not anybody's fault. It's their old. Some of them have been here for 25 and 30 years. They've done due diligence and then some. So we're hopeful that we will be able to work to put a project together, knowing where we'd like them based. And we have new benches down at the Norton Park, and there's new benches down in the Barry Plains Park, Common Park. And those are, you know, the plastic wood and certainly much better than some of the ones that we have currently at North, Middle, and South Common. So anyway, we'll, we'll be working on that.
Those might actually be composites.
Yeah. And, and we also have talked a lot about a town sign, Welcome to Barry. You've probably noticed the new one that's out by Henry Woods, which matches sort of the library. So we've talked about an electronic sign. That has sort of been, that no one wants an electronic sign on the common. So at any rate, we, we are probably going to be replacing or talking about replacing the, you know, the Welcome to Barry sign that's actually rotted and sort of sways in the wind. We can't even put the bunting on there and hope that it's going to stay standing. So we'll, we'll be working on those areas. And again, that's, we're going to be using some ARPA funds for that. We, we continue to work with Charter to try to get expanded broadband to more people in the community. And that has been our less than productive work. I mean.
I think we should still, at least with the electronic sign, make sure we're doing full due diligence as an option for that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say that's out of.
Well, I, I saw it out of the question. It's out of the question, I believe, on the town, on the uptown commons. I don't, I mean, the Historical Society will bear their teeth and weapons, I think.
I think we could have a good discussion with them at some point about different locations, different styles. There's a lot of options that people generally don't think of when they're, when they hear electric sign. We're not talking, you know, some big, you know, bright orange metal framed thing. We're, we're talking, you know, there's, there's a lot of options, and I think we could have, perhaps have some good conversation at a meeting.
Yeah. I, I agree. We can have some good conversation about it. And I mean, we need to, you know, I know that there's different locations, and I know as a policeman you'd probably say, "Don't put it down in front of wholesome fools." Where you've got 16 different roads coming out and everybody trying to cross and after, you know, and you can't see up the hill, and you can't see around the corner. And then, oh, let's put a sign there so I can sit and read the sign while I'm trying to, you know, get across 122.
I think just as importantly, maybe we don't put it on state land as you'd have right there where that is. State layout, not town layout.
That would be true.
Anyway.
That'd be a problem.
Phil, through the chair.
That's, that's, that's all I have. Correspondence is just the MassDOT Bridge Replacement Valley Road.
So the state has decided that they will be funding replacement of the bridge crossing on Valley Road. I can't picture where it is. I apologize.
Is it the, is it the one that's on the Felton Field run, or is it the one on, or actually on Valley Road?
I believe it's the one on Valley.
Bridge number 613-303.
Yeah. Okay. So that's great. It's, it's going to be, it's, what are they going to do? I know the one going up to Felton Field, they're going to close that road when they do that one. They must be just doing single lane on the Valley Road.
I don't know.
So the only caveat is if there's any land acquisition that's required as a result of the, the project, it's the town's responsibility.
Yeah.
So that's just one thing that as the project goes through a different design phases, we will need perhaps at the next town meeting authorization to acquire any land and/or easements for support of this project. If we do that in advance, then we don't need to worry about kind of trying to be catch up on it.
Okay.
And that, that's standard for any MassDOT project, that the town does have to cover any land takings. And then, you know, there's, whether it goes to assessment, sometimes people will also donate land. You know, you can't really count on that, but it is something that happens from time to time. There's a.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Actually, on about eight years ago, when I was sitting in the chair on the planning board, it was promised that the Commission at that time would include bicycle racks so it could make a welcoming for all the bikes and folks coming into town, and that they would have a place to walk up to their bikes and maybe walk around, buy an ice cream cone. Spend a little money here and there. And that fell straight through. I would like to bring that to you again.
Okay. Certainly sounds like.
If we have some ARPA money, which I understand there should be, I'd be glad to get that around still.
And we also have, we also have some common money from the Common Project. So.
We'll refer to them. I think it's time that gets a draw.
I think that's a great point.
One other thing, it wasn't on the agenda, and that's why I'm here, because the piece that I, I wanted to bring here never made it to the agenda. I want to use the sound property.
It's, is you, are you the Barry Tax Payers Association?
It's right here. Yes.
Yeah. Item, item five, 5K.
It's on there.
It was on, it was on mine. Barry Tax Payers Association.
Okay. Moving.
It's hidden in there, but it's there.
Oh, before we move on, Morgan, there's one other comment before we move on.
I'm pretty sure the ARPA funds could be a matching part of the monies if we went for a grant for the Division of Conservation Services, which we are now open for since the, eligible for since the Open Space Plan was put back in place. There's money for the parks, matching grants. And I'm pretty sure we might be able to use the ARPA and the Common Money as our part of the, they're, they're 50 to 70 percent payback grants. And there's money there every year. The fiscal year for this year is closed. If that was something the state, the town wanted to look forward to, my wife and I would be willing to do, do the grant proposal for the town because we've done several of them in the past for Old Town.
Oh.
Yeah. I, I think, and we can call this part of my Select Board report. I think one of the things I do want to look at going forward, and kind of touched on this a little bit, is potentially repurposing the Open Space Committee to pursue some of those grants. And instead of, you know, now that the report is finished. I think that along with potentially a Bike, Ped and Trails Committee to understand our trail systems better and, and potentially a, a communication, technology and communication committee. So I think those three are kind of priority for me as far as looking at those going forward. But I'd like to, you know, talk to you more about open space at some point.
Thank you, John. Anytime you want.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We're looking now at Police Department server funding request. And I know we have the document for that from Dell Technologies, and the chief is here, so.
So what this is, this would be a server onsite at the Public Safety Building that would replace our dependence on Rutland to store all of our files. So our, we run a system, it's called IMC. That's what all of our, we read all our reports with. All of our in-house information is used through IMC. What I would like to do in cooperation with our IT department, CM Geeks, is purchase the server, which would allow us not, not to have to rely on Rutland anymore and be able to store all of that at the locally. See, this includes a five-year warranty. There is no annual fee. And CM Geeks has offered to perform the transfer at no cost. So that's just this one.
No, no, what, so do we get, because obviously we're paying to do this with Rutland. Is Rutland now going to say, "Okay, you guys are doing this at home. Here's how much is off your annual fee?"
Well, that, that would be up to the board to request that.
Well, I, well, I mean, if we're going to, because it would make no sense to me to say, "We're paying Rutland to do it, and then we've decided we'd rather do it ourselves," and Rutland says, "Too bad you haven't entered into a contract with us for X number of dollars, and if you want to take it offline, go ahead." But you're, because of how we are set up, we're, we've paid to, you know, make this possible, so you guys in Barry are still going to have to pay for it. That's what I would worry about.
Yeah. And this, this comes along with the, my going forward for a domain, an email domain, like .gov account, which I know that I discussed with, with you. That would, again, allow us to have our own domain. We wouldn't be reliant upon Rutland for email services through Microsoft, which we do. There is, we're limited to a certain number of licenses. So if I, we do it with the .gov account, then when we open up Microsoft, rather than saying, "Rutland, read it with Dispatch," and we'll say, "Barry Police Department," and we'll, we'll have unlimited licenses. We don't have to pay for licenses.
My only, my only concern is, we just got into a multi-year deal with Rutland, didn't we? For all this stuff.
Yeah, I'm not sure where, when.
I think we just, I, I think last year we signed, well, that would be something Greg, you and I could look at. I'm, I'm not opposed to being a more self-sufficient organization, but if we're, if we're already paying for these services, I would be nervous to say, "Okay, we're just going to double pay because we don't, we'd rather be on our own." Maybe we really should be on our own, and maybe we should try to excise ourselves from some of the things we're paying Rutland to do.
Yeah. Are there other, are there benefits, other benefits other than the email services that, that you know well hand?
With having a server onsite, you know, there's, it'll reduce, right now there's a significant delay in IMC when we try to log on. I mean, it can be a minute, minute and a half, if not longer. So we're going to be sitting there with a prisoner waiting for the system to come online. And rather than it being 17 miles away, it'll be 17 feet away.
Right, right. Well, no, I'm not saying it's not a good idea. I'm just saying that it'll be really hard to go to a town meeting and say, "Oh, we're going to do this." And they say, "Well, don't you already do it?" "Yeah, we do." But it'll, it's a little too slow, and we entered into this agreement with Rutland, and now we're just going to say, "We're not going to do Part A, Part B, and Part C, but we're going to pay Rutland, but we're not going to use the service." So I'm just nervous about, should we look at our agreement? Because if we can get out, out of it, I'm with you.
Correct.
But if we just are going to duplicate things that we're already paying Rutland to do, it would make me, and I want to do this, but it would make me nervous to just say to the people, "It is so important to be on our own. We're going to pay, we're going to pay Rutland for the next three years anyway because we've got an agreement with them." That's, I mean, I just think that unless there's, there's a loophole in that agreement, and we can do some of this on our own and, you know, pay for our own, I'm, I'm like, okay with that. But see, that, that's why everybody got together right around Rutland, you know, in the early days, because that was cheaper or they thought better. And, you know, now we're saying, "Well, we're getting a little bigger and a little more sophisticated. We'd like to just, you know, start paying for our own stuff." Because this is the first $4,000. You and I both know it's probably just tipping our toe in the water. Is that, I mean, are you really looking to pull away from Rutland and get into being a more self-sufficient unit?
Well, yes, absolutely. But I mean, this is, this is the cost for at least five years because this includes, I mean, this is just the server itself. There's no annual fee. And then, you know, the warranty is five years, so this is for five years.
And, and the, the other thing that you talked about, the MassGov, that's a freebie?
Yes, that's offered free from the government.
Okay. So we would just say, we, we know we said we would be, you, you, you would be doing this Rutland, but we've decided we're going to do it in-house. And so we're, see, I want to just see that contract, because if there's things we can just say, "We're not going to do that with you anymore." My guess is we can't.
Well, yeah, I haven't seen the contracts.
Okay.
Through the chair. There's a.
Question too. I believe other departments are also using Rutland's, Rutland's servers too. So like the clerk's office and all of the offices from here. So I don't know if that's part of that same agreement or not, but they're, they provide our backups as well.
We probably should look at the contract.
So I mean, if we could see.
Don't you think? I, I mean.
I mean, realistically, if it's that much of a delay and it's across all departments, and we can save that much time for every person working within the town, that could be beneficial.
Yeah, but, but.
But it's something we need to understand better, what we're paying for it now, what the cost of what we're paying for it to be reduced.
Would this server be sufficient to take care of all of the other departments that are working through this Rutland group?
And that's kind of the next question I had. I know at one point, maybe a year ago, in some of the different policies you were putting forward, there was talk about potentially moving towards body cams and the amount of servers and space that would require. Would this be something that would be a step in that direction?
So, no, the, the, all the body camera storage is in the cloud.
Okay.
That's all cloud-based.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know enough about the specifics of the contract, and Alan brings up a different piece that I wasn't even aware of. And I, and I know that, you know, they, what do they, Rutland just took on Warren, which I thought was an odd choice. I mean, it's not like close. And they, they have Hubbardson, they have us.
Yeah, OCam.
OCam. Yeah. So obviously, they are, they are trying to manage, you know, to be cost-effective, right? And so they probably need Barry, I would say.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming we still have an agreement with them. We'd still be doing dispatch through them and other things along those lines.
Yeah.
I'm curious how much of, of that, again, having looked at the contract, how much of it is for the, the data management?
And, and what, when, what, what is Alan talking about? What does that really look like? You know?
Right, right.
So we should have to investigate.
If that's part of the same contract or a different contract, if that's even remotely the same servers.
That we are probably going to be talking to Alan about a special town meeting. Not that he's interested, I know, but I, I know she's got primary, which is in October. You've got the election, which is in November, I believe, the 10th.
7th.
7th, okay, so 7th. Would you prefer, instead of trying to do it in between primary and the election, would you prefer after November, the, after the election?
I mean, that would definitely be a little easier, but it really, I mean, the town meetings are pretty, I mean.
They're not, yeah, it's not like a.
It's not moving like an annual town meeting.
Right.
It's just what takes the time is that there's a lot of bylaws or a lot of things out of my office. And it's time-sensitive to get those through the AG's office for approval.
Well, what would the boards like to do?
How long is this quote good for? Does it have a, I didn't notice a, a timeline in it when I looked through earlier.
Expires on September 17th.
September 17th, okay. And our next meeting is?
The 18th.
The 18th.
I mean, I just think.
I don't expect it would change too much.
Well, I, I mean, we.
Quote-wise.
We definitely have a couple of weeks to look at the, the agreement.
We do. I think that's a reasonable.
Yeah, just to do a, a little bit of due diligence on it.
Agreed.
Yep.
And that we can grapple with this on our next meeting.
Yep.
Which would be on the 17th. So we would still be within the window.
Okay. 17th or 18th? Yeah, it'd be the 18th.
It'd be the 18th. I, I know.
Unless you really want to meet on a Sunday.
No, no, but I mean.
I don't think it's going to change very much.
No, and none of that. I think you can even, you can even call them and say, "Due to the Selectman's meeting schedule, would you change this date to the 18th or the 19th?" And I'm sure that they would be amenable to that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate, I, I know I don't sound like it, but I appreciate you wanting to, you know, try to streamline things and make things, you know, better for the folks who are working in the town of Barry. But I'm just concerned about double, double paying for things because, yeah, so.
And potentially something that could be, you know, better suited for when that, you know, term does expire. And that, you know, we'd have to look at that agreement, because I don't know that it was quite that long of a term. But I, again, we'd have to, I don't remember it offhand. It was at least a year ago.
Yeah. You're great. So it, it, you know, we, there may be a way that we can, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Was renewed a year ago?
I believe it was about a year ago. The regional agreement was renewed.
Is it written down, like within services, the different types?
I would have to, I would have to go through and look at it. It's pretty, it's pretty general, because it's only three or four pages long.
Yeah.
Like the level of specificity, I'm not sure about without, without going back and looking at it.
Some sort of break on that.
Yeah. Well, they may say, "We already, you know, prepared and spent, okay, we, we're already positioned that we need this money to operate." And so my guess is they will be reluctant unless there's a clause, an escape clause in there for us.
Did you say it was a three-year or a five-year?
I don't, I don't know. I, I know it's not five.
This proposal is five years.
Yeah.
Essentially. It's, it's five years worth of servers, so it'd be about $1,000 a year.
Yeah. And so it may be inconsequential. The, the amount of money may be inconsequential when we really look at it. You know, if it's $1,000 a year and it really fixes some stuff, that's a different.
Yeah, that one.
Uh, just one more comment.
Yes.
Can I just ask the chief a quick question? Would we ever move back to our own radio communication system?
I doubt it.
Yeah, I doubt it. Okay. I just know the VHF system would have much more coverage than UHF.
Yeah. I mean, I, I know that there is a push to go digital for the entire state. I don't know what the timeline is for that, but I doubt that we would ever go back to our own communication system.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Chief, very much.
Absolutely. Did you want to cover the auxiliary service personnel?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Then that is 5G on the agenda, which is Police Auxiliary Traffic Detail Unit Designation as Special Municipal Employees.
Back to individuals who.
Okay. So we are, I did send you guys the policy through the, I never, ever thought that in my career I would see the day when I can't fill traffic detail, but unfortunately, that is coming. We have had to turn away and shut down, not necessarily projects, but we've had to delay projects because we can't fill traffic detail, especially on major railways like 122. So what a lot of departments are doing, and we would like to follow suit, is doing like a civilian traffic.
Like the old days.
Well, pretty much.
Essentially, flaggers?
Yeah.
Flaggers. They would have to be certified as flaggers to a MassDOT approved program.
Okay.
They'd have to be first aid certified and CPR certified. They would not be in police uniforms. They would not be in police cruisers. They would have no police powers.
Right.
Basically, they would just be there to direct traffic.
Slower.
They're, as far as pay goes, it would be the same detail rate that police officers get and at the same.
Which is what?
$51.
$51 an hour, and we can't get anybody to do it. Okay.
Yep. And they need to be designated as.
They need to be, if they're already working as town employees, we designate them as special municipal employees, which allows us to not be stuck with paying an overtime rate, which is the policy that we have in place for the members of the Call Department, who also may wear other hats as town employees. There were three individuals from, I believe they have a background in Barry Fire, who indicated an interest in coming forward and meeting the, the need that Chief has identified.
I would suspect they'll have some interest.
Well, we're going to cap it at 10 people right at, right now. Just because I, I think that that's easily manageable. And then, like I said, they, they would get their certifications.
So is there anything that you would use them, you can't use them for, for like the band concert?
I could. I could use them for town events.
Okay.
For traffic control.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was specifically a security detail, like if it was, had to do with domestic restraining orders, then obviously they wouldn't be doing that. Strictly traffic.
Okay. Do we need a vote for the?
I, the board needs to vote to designate the Police Auxiliary Unit for Traffic Enforcement, uh, Traffic Details as Special Municipal Employees. And Chief, I don't know if you're looking for a vote of the board this evening in terms of the individuals, or does that wait until, until later?
Do they need to, to vote each individual specifically?
Yeah, so typically, what we, typically what we do is we put it on the agenda. I, Sandy handed that to me today, and I realized typically what we do is we list out the individuals on the agenda.
Okay.
So probably the best thing to do is hold off on the second piece.
Okay.
And then at least get the designation of Special Municipal Employees. We'll put those names on the next agenda if we vote it by the board.
So we need a motion to approve the Police Auxiliary Traffic Detail Unit and to designate individuals who would serve in that capacity as Special Municipal Employees.
I would move to, to set a Police Auxiliary Unit for Traffic Details to be filled by up to 10 individuals as Special Municipal Employees.
Make a motion?
Second.
Make a motion, made and seconded, for the Police Auxiliary Traffic Detail Unit to be established, and those individuals working in that unit to be designated as Special Municipal Employees. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sean Andrews?
One other question. I, I assume you have some procedure in place for determining how those details are handed out as far as, I'm assuming to police officers first by some supporter?
In the policy, it does state that full-time police officers get first right of refusal.
Yep. And then, but within those, those 10, there would be some.
Yep.
System in place. Okay.
Whether it's hourly, it'd probably be. Whether it's hourly, it'd probably be an hourly system. That's how we used to do it. Whoever has the most of hours gets the most of the bottom of the list.
Yep. All right.
And these personnel will be background checked and everything.
They'd go through a master DOT training of some sort?
Yes, so there's a...
To get that certification?
They published a list of certified flagger courses that they recognize, so I just, I gave, I put that list out to say, if you want to do it, you have to take one of these courses. I don't think they're very involved, but at least they have a certification. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, moving along here, I see that the town clerk is here and probably wants to talk to us a little bit about the code. General Code and Proposals for Codification Services. Ellen?
We have a deadline that we need to, we need for the signing of that contract, which is in the 16th.
Okay, so you need it tonight? I mean, I know this, I know that this was presented and voted at town meeting to, to fund this, so I know that the town has already approved the, the, the basic premise of doing this. Like, it's not a choice. I mean, we have to do it. And it's, um, something that obviously you would supervise with the help.
Town council?
Yeah, it's over. And somehow, somehow, the Historical Society wrote a letter to the board, concerned that we were going to throw out documents. I think that we talked about the room next to the documents room is what we're cleaning out.
Oh.
I think. So Bob Bentley, I will, you know, say to him, no, Bob, we're not throwing out documents, because he wanted to have an opportunity to review all the documents we had thrown out. I said, we're not throwing out anything. The town clerk is in charge of all of that. We're just throwing out junk that has, you know, kind of accumulated over the years. So there was a little confusion about that, because it's the room next to the documents room. So I think they thought, yeah.
When we saw the flood on the flooding...
Yeah, there, there were two separate conversations. There was one about the room next to it, and then also a conversation about potentially, I don't know if reinforcing is the right word, but better protecting the, the records that we have in that room. I mean, if the Historical Society does want to look through that other room, I don't know that there's much of...
I don't think that. I'm gonna wait for that. Everybody had till the 30th.
We gave notice.
Okay, they were part of the notice that was given.
Yeah, people did. People did go through and some things were removed.
It's going, Ellen.
By and large, it looks pretty similar to how it went a couple of months ago.
I'd be surprised if there was much of significance there historically, but you never know.
Okay, moving along.
Yeah, yeah.
So General Code sent out you guys' copies of the agreement and stuff. So basically, we're just authorizing them to move forward. There are gonna be decisions that we'll have to make, and obviously, this is just step one. We'll be involved in this, and the select board will be involved in this, and town meeting will be involved in this going forward. But the first step is to have them come in and do their assessment, and they have a whole timetable. Some of the decisions that we're gonna, the biggest decisions that we're gonna make at the... Is it 13?
Well, 12 and 13, they talk about...
13 has the optional components.
Yeah. It tells you the... On page 11, 12, and 13, it sort of reviews the project, you know, how, how much it costs and he does what?
And what the calendar is.
Yeah, so one of the things is whether or not we want to include the additional $283 for the...
Gender neutral.
Gender neutral language throughout the code. That, that was an additional $283, which we budgeted for.
Yeah.
But we just have to let them know when we sign up. But on page eight, where it says code adoption legislation, once the bylaws are codified, we, we have four different options of recodification of our town bylaws. And those four options, so we will need to make that decision at some point, how we're going to proceed. So we'll probably have another conversation again.
Okay.
The general bylaws and the zoning bylaws can be renumbered as part of the new town code book without any changes to the text. The town meeting would then vote only to accept the renumbering of the bylaws as they appear in the code. Under this option, the text of the bylaws cannot be changed in any way. Even errors or spelling, grammar, and punctuation have to be retained if that was the route we went.
Okay.
That's not what I'm recommending. If the town wishes to make revisions to the general bylaws and zoning bylaws as part of this project, we recommend that these bylaws be renumbered as part of the new town code, revised as desired by the town and then readup, read adopted in their entirety by the town meeting. This method would allow for revisions to the text to bring it up to date and also allow for the correction and error, of errors and spelling and grammar and punctuation. It will result in a new set of general bylaws and a new zoning bylaw that will replace all prior bylaws under this method. The newly adopted bylaws would be subject to complete review by the Attorney General. So that would, that's the complete review of all of our, of our bylaws, which was what I was recommending. The third option would be if the town wishes to make some wording changes to the general bylaws and zoning bylaws without completely readopting, the General Code could incorporate the desired wording changes into the bylaw and draft this separate warrant articles the town meeting, yeah. The town meeting will to adopt in order to put each of the changes into effect. Depending on the number of changes the town decided to make, this method could result in a very large amount of warrant articles.
Right.
Each amendment would be adopted, and each one would be subject to the Attorney General's. I do not recommend that, because that would be very costly.
Unless there were only a couple of changes, but I'm sure there's likely to be a good number.
And then finally, the last option would be that the town may choose the approach, just the general bylaws one way and the zoning bylaws in a different way. Any regulations in the town codes, such as subdivision regulations, would need to be submitted to the appropriate body which adopted the regulations for acceptance of their renumbering as part of the code to put any changes made by the town into effect. So I just wanted to point that out.
So are you, are you recommending number two?
That's what I am recommending. That's what we did initially. That was, when we, when I first created, put the code forward to the town to vote on initially, that's what we did. We took all of the old bylaws that were all antiquated, outdated, and we had General Code come in. They were the company that came in with their attorneys and their assistants. They went through and they codified all of our general bylaws, our zoning bylaws. They put them into a nice format, numbering. They made sure that they were consistent with state statutes at that time. And we created the code of the town of Barry. So because so many years have passed now, I think it's time to do it again. Just time to go through and just make sure. I'm not suggesting that we change any of the, you know, wordings of the bylaws that don't need to be changed. Just anything that is inconsistent with state or federal law and anything that, type of, especially typographical, because we all know that there's a lot of those. There's also a lot of numbering areas, errors throughout the code where, that don't make sense, that we can improve on. And then, once everything's finalized, once General Code has come up with their final plan, it will, any discrepancies that they have will be determined by town council. Legal council will make the final decision, the final ruling as to, you know, if there's any question as to which way we have to go. And then, at that point, we'll, we would be ready to bring it before town meeting for the townspeople to vote.
And I assume this would be best to keep separate from any significant changes, like with, um, like with the planning board, with what was put forward last year that might be revisited and put forward again in a, a different way, or any potential zoning changes that are, you know, put forward. With the master plan, there's potential that we could, you know, have action items that are related to changes in zoning. But that would be better to keep separate from this, I assume? Things like that, or?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, any, any, any bylaws or zoning bylaws that get passed from this point forward in the process while we're doing this would all, would be like a separate inclusion. The, you know, we would try to include those, incorporate those into the final version before we go to town meeting to vote. So just prior to town meeting, you know, there'll be the final, you know, edit.
So that's something that this company would still take a look at if there was something that was being proposed?
Yes.
Okay. They, yeah. I just want to make sure we, you know, if the planning board does want to put something forward again, we, you know, let them know that they'd want to have it in sooner so that this company could review it as well as part of this kind of thing. Just make sure we're communicating to all the boards that might have an interest in making amendments.
With them too, just, just to be sure.
Or any other board.
Because again, like, I mean, if we have a town, if we have a, a bylaw that gets passed on the same meeting that we pass, I, I mean, it's, we're always adding and changing. So if we have a bylaw that is on the same warrant that we're accepting the code, it's gonna be basically the same thing. We're gonna be sending that bylaw off to the Attorney General's office for approval. Once we gain our approval, then that bylaw would then be submitted as it is right now, as a regular process to the code company, and then at that point, they would then incorporate it. And that would be our supplement number one to that version of the code.
Yeah, so that would still be, okay, yeah, that makes sense. So it'd be separated, it'd be essentially the first supplement, yeah. Even though it's at the same town meeting.
So the action you seek tonight from the board is that, one, we would vote to authorize the proposal for codification services. Do we, or is it your individual, do we, you know, say we want it to be, you know, done as you recommended, number two? And then we, we have a conversation about gender neutral language and, and approve it? Is that what you're seeking?
Yes.
So the, so the motion would read something like, "To approve the proposal for codification services presented by the town clerk at our meeting and including her recommendations that..." "That the final deliverables, okay, for code adoption legislation be completed and referenced in number two on page eight." Correct?
Correct.
And that the, and that gender neutral language...
Option.
...option be exercised in the code. Would that, would that be correct, what you're recommending? And so that would be the motion. Sandy, I know you're probably throwing things at me on the table, you heard that lengthy motion, but I think that does summarize what we're hoping to have, maybe either have a further discussion about or be prepared to vote on this evening.
Well, I would, I would make that motion.
Um, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the proposal for codification services as presented and as described by the town clerk. Second. The motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Looks like it's a deal and an awful lot of work ahead?
Lot of work ahead.
A lot of work ahead and, um, what is your estimated timeframe when you would be at town meeting with this document? This year, next year?
Annual town meeting 2024.
Okay.
It's mine.
You're a very ambitious person.
Yes. I believe we're gonna shoot for that.
Okay.
Or depending on, of course, town council.
Yeah.
And...
How many changes we have?
The company.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, and if you guys are interested, I'm sure you guys have already seen this, but there is a timeline in here too.
Yes, yep.
As to, so that's the timetable that we're gonna try to stick to and the different phases and a little, a little graph there.
And just for the public, this has already been, um, the money appropriated at town meeting for this purpose. So it's not, you know, it's something that the public has indicated that they know we have to do, so.
Right. We just, we need to be current and have things up to date. And then we also need to make it available to, it is available right now to anybody that wants to look at our current town code. It's available on the town's website at thetownofbarry.com under the town code. So if anyone is not familiar with the town code, they can go there and look at the actual existing code. And that's what we're looking to bring up to date.
Yep.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Ellen, for your time.
I appreciate it.
And I know that Greg has talked with us about the fact that there's going to be some testing for mold, mildew, whatever. And he's indicated his strong support that that happens so that we can get a work environment that's safe and secure.
Yeah, so the carpet down there definitely needs to be replaced.
You're kind. You're kind to say definitely needs. It's really in tough shape.
The last time we had the mold testing done, then we used the company out of the truck.
Okay, if you have any information about that?
Yeah, if you have, that would be helpful to me.
Because we've had mold in the vault before.
I'm sure you have.
So we've had remediation done in the past.
I know, I know.
But we had to have Polygon come in, and it was incredibly expensive.
Yeah, life is expensive too.
But hopefully, we don't have that issue again, and we can just make some minor changes and get the air quality test and make sure that it's safe.
Well, the, the thing of it is, obviously, we're gonna be ripping up that carpet, and we've gotta, we've gotta take a look at, you know, what, what do we have to do down there? And depending on what the mold testing is, that could be more than just ripping the carpet up and removing it. We also have other areas in the building where you could be relocated. I'm not saying that's a good idea, because I know the vault is, it has to be on ground level. We can't have it in the front of the building. But, so there are things we can talk about as far as, you know, what to do. I know that the sump pump has, has sort of been fixed and remediated, so maybe we won't have six or eight inches of water in, in the, you know, where we have the HVAC system, but we'll see. Thank you so much for being here this night.
Thank you so much.
Good night, thank you.
Okay. CMR PC, Greg, do you want to talk to us about the delegates? I know we need one from the selectmen.
Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has put out their annual request for the, um, the designation of member, full member and alternate member for the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. The full member must be appointed by the planning board, so that's not your duty. But you're, you also get to appoint a, an alternate, and the only requirement is that the alternate be a resident of the community. Typically, the board members who might be interested offer it to them in terms of whether you wish to have one of your members be appointed. If not, then we would put it out there to the public and see who might be interested.
Could you talk a little bit about the timeframe? I mean, what kind of time commitment is this? Is this basically, you just do nothing unless somebody's not available?
Right, so this is, would essentially be the alternate. The current delegate is Matt Urban on the planning board. Actually, in, in the spring, I was appointed as a delegate, but it was right as things were transitioning, so I don't think that ever got to them that I was stepping into that spot, because it was vacant. This is a new year. It's a new, you know, reset as of July 1st, I believe. But it's, their meetings are generally quarterly.
Exactly.
And they're usually virtual.
Quarterly meetings plus their annual meeting in June.
And then it's just to be, it would be someone who's sitting as the alternate, if Matt is not able to be there.
And would you, are you saying you're still, you remain interested in that job?
I, I'm happy to keep doing it. It's, it's very helpful to the town where if we have someone in attendance at these meetings, each meeting, it gets us another hour of free service from CMR PC to help us with planning and anything along those lines, which we do have 12 hours of right now that we can use for planning. Well, that's the...
Is that just the bottom?
Well, yes. That's the, that's what you start with each year, and then you can add on to that. So I, it, it may have gone up since then, but I, I don't know how many meetings they've actually had since July 1st. I think there's one coming up. That'll be the first one, so I think everyone is at 12 right now, because there hasn't had some, been an opportunity to...
So September 14th is their next meeting?
I have no interest in being the alternate. So I think by acclaim, I would go make the motion that John Dixon continue to be the official alternate to CMR PC from the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded for you, John. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Well, you can vote for yourself.
You know the rules.
It passes without, I'll abstain.
Okay. Uh, just a comment on Barry Plain's Common Improvement Project. We are, I, I know that we received a check from the Barry Charitable Foundation to do some... some, pay some bills down there for, um, some, uh, stonework and, um, plantings around the flag. Uh, so at any rate, I think we have the bills, right, Greg? And so we just authorize that, uh, that money be expended for those projects.
So Sandy, Sandy has the, we have the checks?
Yes.
And we'll pay the bills.
Sounds good. Okay. Uh, and I, and I thanks to Charlotte Garu, who has been, you know, sort of the person who's sort of taken responsibility to work on that project down there and has done a lot of good work in the last couple, three years, so our thanks to her. Now we have a, a list of, um, to use of town property. We have a request for town property used by the Circle of Sound, or Song, I should say. I think that's why you're here, and so, um, I think you've done all the paperwork. Uh, Sandy, I, can you comment? Is all, all the paperwork and so forth filed appropriately for, um, use of, by Circle of Song? Maybe she can't talk to us.
She can.
Can she talk?
No, but it wouldn't be on the agenda following.
I can show you, I brought it all.
Okay, you're good. Well, it probably wouldn't be on the agenda if, you know, and, um, okay, so, uh, those in favor of the, um, use of town property by the Circle of Song?
I, I would move to approve the use of town property by the Circle of Song.
Which is the town hall, correct?
Yeah, but we, what we're asking for is a diminution of charge, um, and I can give you the... But we added up...
Yeah, we got it. What, with it?
You had the letter? Yes.
Yeah, the paperwork was submitted.
Yep.
It's 50 bucks a week, and it would be 1,700 bucks for us, and we just don't feel like we can afford that, so we're hoping we could pay $500 a year to use the town hall.
And so you have, um, yes, name of people, Tuesdays. And so, uh, so you're requesting to have, instead of $50 per session...
Yeah.
You're suggesting that you'd be 20, 30?
Well, it's, uh, 250 dollars a, um, in the hall, 250 dollars a standard.
That's what you're requesting it be rather than, uh, for individual evening use?
Right. We just don't have any income.
Um, I, I don't know.
We wonder what, what if you walk...
Do we, do we have, um, any, I mean, what, what did you pay this year?
Well, we didn't pay anything for a while. I guess we kept going, because you weren't charging anything. And then, I think we were paying 30 dollars, especially when we came in just once a month to use it. Um, but of course it's gotten bigger and we don't rent our house any longer, so we were, we were coming into the town hall just to get used to it, to the concerts. So we were paying 30 bucks a night.
And, and do you, uh, obviously, our concern is custodial. I mean, because everybody says, oh, it doesn't cost you anything, you're cheating and lading with the building anyway, but it does cost us in custodial.
Well, no, I understand that, that's why we have to, we have, it's an hour and a half, um, once a week, and, um, we do keep the heat low, and, no, I understand, we do understand that it costs us a lot, but hopefully we can cover that. There's no...
Anyone have a recommendation or... See, the really hard thing is, is if we have a feast, a fee, okay, for use of the town hall, but every time anybody comes in, they say, well, we don't want to pay that much. And then some people pay that much because they don't realize that you can just come and beat us up and we'll save less money. Um, our concern just is, um, making sure that the town hall is left clean, you know, trash is thrown out, et cetera, et cetera, because if, if what happens is, uh, Mr. Mobili has, he does all the buildings in the town, okay? I don't know how he does it, gets all the trash out and so forth, but so every time we say, oh yeah, go ahead and use the town hall, it's, it's then, if somebody has not used the town hall, he really doesn't have a lot of work there to do. If we've had two or three or four groups in there during the course of the month, there's a lot more work for him to do. So our, our only concern is to try to make, break even, and so, um, anyone have, I haven't...
I, I...
I just wondered since we, you know, first of all, we don't create any trash except for at our concerts, which are twice a year, and we always take the trash with us. Um, you know, the church is in there, so we...
Yep.
Move our stuff aside and then we set it back up again.
Right, right.
So we always leave it as we found it. And we're, you know, we're all the taxpaying citizens, and we always, and are, appreciate first of all, the use of the town hall, but also take good care and make sure that it's always left like we found it.
Well, I, I would amend it, just to be, um, get something on the table so we can discuss it further, is to, is to make a recommendation that we do 250 dollars for the first half of the year. And if everything is as you've described it, perfect in person, and the trash is going with you, I'm good for, for the next time to be 250 dollars. But if we find that, you know, our custodian has X more to do and Y more to do, um, then we would have to sit down and have another conversation. So I would approve this for, for the first six months, and, um, we would have a conversation, um, come January, or the end of January.
I, I'm...
Is that job? Good.
Yeah, I'd certainly agree to that. I think there's, you know, where it's essentially a bulk rate, where it's going to be used repeatedly. I think, you know, it's not, if there was one time people come in, trash replaced, I think where it's going to be a repetitive use situation, I think it should be, you know, I, I think people are going to, I think you're going to be more respectful than, than if it was a one-time thing, and then you could disappear into the distance, you know?
You have a little bit of complaint?
Right. I, I think it's fine to have...
I personally have been involved in using the town hall for about 40 years, so I would say...
Forty or four?
Forty.
I thought you said forty.
Yeah, 40 years, so I mean, I...
Yeah, I, I think we can do...
It's like my second home, so...
Yeah, I think we can do essentially a, a bulk rate where it's a, a large number of glasses, that adds up.
And we'll revisit it in, in January, and if there's an issue or a problem of concern, then we'll, have you come in?
And you're welcome to our concert.
Oh, thank you.
If you should.
Okay. Um, we have a motion on the floor. Uh, we have a second, John?
Aye, second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Um, any further comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go sing.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so that is for the first list of dates up here and not for the second, for Sandy's record.
I'm going to start on the 21st because the 14th is busy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone, yeah, you have Thursdays, right?
Thursday night, 7:00, 8:00, 3:00.
Okay. Okay, then we have, um, a request to use town property for Barry Taxpayers Association. Do we have the paperwork? Okay. September 13th and 27th, so two days.
Initially.
Initially, okay. So we have two days initially, and that is your meeting. The only concern that I have, and I should, probably should have brought it up with, the handicapped accessibility to that building is because the, the ramp is not, okay, compliant.
It's not ADA compliant.
It's not ADA compliant. I'm sorry. Well, I, I, yeah. So my, that's my only concern about making sure that, um, you know, if, if there are people who say they can't access your meeting or something, we may have to, you know, shift a location. Um, and I know that you're talking, thinking of 25 to, you know, that would probably be senior center, 25 or 100 people.
Third floor here.
Or third floor here, yeah. So, at any rate, just, just for that caveat, because you're looking for quite a few people, and if you have somebody who says, I can't get into the building, we may have to make an adjustment, okay? So do we have any, um, conversation or questions for Mr. Andrews? I assume this is your request.
It is. I signed it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to have the fee waived.
And the fee was the 50 dollar? Um, well, I'm, I'm just going to say what I said there. If after the first time it's a mess, we'll come looking. I mean, I mean, really, I, I, I just can't say, oh yeah, go in and use the town hall, and then people come in and, you know, if it's a wintery night or whatever, not in this, you know, timeframe, but in, in all the snow and mud and ice, and then they got, custodian says, I need three hours of overtime to clean the town hall. You know, that's what we're concerned about. So I have no problem with, um, having, I, I don't know, I don't think we can just waive the fee for you, but we could do as, you know, we could do certainly a, a better deal. Um, and obviously, we will check it out, and if it's a mess, we'll come, come looking. We just have to.
And you've decided to do it at the town hall, excuse me, town hall instead of the senior center?
Well, I, I'm not deciding anything. I'm saying that either, either place is an option. I'm just concerned because of the lack of handicapped access with a, a citizens group of this sort.
Yeah, I don't know how the, uh, senior center would serve, you know, I'm not sure how many people we're going to get.
Well, so senior center is pretty big.
It could be 200.
It's big.
So, you know, we'll have to see.
Well, so...
We may have to move it, but that's easy enough then.
Yeah, so...
If we started there, we're in good, good shape.
You mean, starting...
There's a lot of people.
You think you're going to get a ton of people?
I have no idea.
Yeah, well, I, I would just say, then we will, we will sort of look at a 25 dollar fee, and, is that amenable to you? That's sort of what we're doing with the, and, um, if that becomes something that is, you know, not reasonable because of whatever, we'll sit down with you and hey, say, it's got to be more. Now, the concern that I have, Barry Taxpayers Association, as an associate, are you a 501(c)(3) or a 501(c)(4)? You're not, you're not really under the state, okay?
It's not a 501 anything.
You're not a 501 anything, okay. Hmm. So you're an individual then that's going to have to pay this?
Yeah, I'm going to be paying the fee, yes.
Okay. Okay. I mean, I, I don't know if you intend to, um, you know, get to the Secretary of State's office and get yourself...
I have a 501(c)(3), I'm not running us for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, please. At one time, there was an organization, John Maillus was involved in this, called the Barry Taxpayers Association. Could this group not go under the same groupings? I don't know whether that was a 501(c)(3) or whatever the numbers were.
If it was anything at all.
Or if it was anything at all. It was years ago.
Well, I, you can look up in the Secretary of State's stuff, and you can look up and see if there is such an entity as the Barry Taxpayers Association. My guess is because of failure to file reports, failure to file taxes, you're defunct. If, even if, if John Maillus was, or the, or the organization that he had was, um, you know, something that the Secretary of State had blessed. Um, so we can look it up and see, but I would be...
For the first time, can we just call it Friends of Barry?
Well, it's just a...
I think you can call it whatever you want.
I just wondered if it was going to be, uh, you know, something like a 501(c)(3) or whatever, but...
Not initially.
Yeah, okay. So not initially, it's just going to be a meeting, public opportunity.
See what people's interest are.
Okay.
It's for a jury. So it's going to be at the town hall or the senior center?
Well, I, I...
Town hall.
Yeah, town hall, like he says, let's see.
Okay.
I just worry, remember, if, even for the Circle of Song, if people start complaining that they can't get into the building, it is a problem for, for us, because we're saying, yeah, use it for public, and we can't get in.
And would you be asking the chief to put up the sign or anything?
No.
Oh, is?
No.
No?
No. I can't do that, because then the Circle of Song says to me, oh, have them put up about the Circle of Song. Have them put up about this.
So there won't be a sign?
No, unless you guys put some sort of a sandwich sign, or, you know?
You said he could do that, so I don't understand it. He just wasn't in my areas of walking out.
Well, I don't think there's a very...
He's in our blessed, he would take care of it.
No. You can't take care, you, you can't have the police department arbitrarily deciding...
He didn't say that. He said, if you get, if I get blessed, he said he could take care of it.
Yeah, well, you're, you're not, you're not going to get my blessing, you may, you have to...
So why is the, why is there no blessing for the use of the sign?
Well, because we...
For the tax, for the beep, for the betterment?
We either have to bless everyone using it who's doing a public service, like the Circle of Song, and, and we just don't have the capacity to do that. Sometimes we're using it to tell you Route 32 is closed. So we're not going to start, we advertise the town meetings, we advertise town, um, the dates of elections, uh, those are town business things. We, we do public safety announcements on it, but we have not done just, oh, you know, it's so, and the Circle of Song has, um, you know, an event tonight. Um, we, we just don't do that.
So can I put a sign up myself?
Yeah, well, you can within reason, of course, you know, and...
What is within reason?
But the planning board has all those criteria, and if, I mean, if you put a, you see some of the sandwich signs that are up there, you see what the, um, who is it putting on the, the auto show? Is that the Lions Club? They have a sign up there. You see that there are signs up there for, um, the 250th. Yeah. I mean, within reason. I mean, if you, if you try to put, you know, I, I think it's so huge that you can't see it, you know, when you're coming out on, from South Street onto 122, we'll say, do you move it back? Or something like that. We're not, you know, if it's appropriate, we certainly have not bothered anybody who's putting a reasonably decent sign up.
I think, you know, and as far as the electronic signs go, this is where it comes down to, there not being any existing procedures in place for determining what does or doesn't go on them, um, you know, and that might go back to...
That'd be something the town, the board one time will address.
I, I agree that, or something through a...
Betterment of the citizens?
But everything is for the betterment of the citizens, pretty much. I mean, the 250th, is that not for the betterment of the community? Um, yeah, it's really, it's really hard to start saying, well, yes, he is and she is, but he isn't. Or, oh, too bad, I know your, your event's coming up, but we have to close Route 32, or the valley road bridges up. So you don't get to use it. It's just, you...
I, I think, you know, at some point, that does need to get defined between, you know, functions that are put on through a town-appointed committee or town-elected committee, then there are things that are through, you know, nonprofits, and then there are, you And then there are, you know, private citizen interests, which is, I guess where this would fall right now. I think, honestly, this goes back to having some sort of technology and communications committee to help establish those guidelines for what takes precedence over what. There's also issues. I mean, just from a roadway safety perspective, I know sign clutter does become an issue. But, you know, there's... Realistically, we use those changeable message boards for a lot more nationally than the METs, the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices actually I was for. But, so it's a tricky balance, and I think we do need to put together guidance on it going forward. I think, I think it's a hard one to say where it's not a town, a function of the town government, and it's not even a nonprofit at this point. I think it's hard to dedicate that asset to it. Like, that's, you know... But again, you know, there's certain amounts of advertisement signage that is allowed. You know, you'll see different businesses around town putting signs in different locations. There's guidelines for that that the planning board would have.
Yeah.
And I'll share that this is happening personally. I'll share it, you know, publicly for you. I just, I would be hesitant to use the changeable message sign for this.
So we have a $25 fee for each of those nights. And we have those nights paperwork that is appropriate. So those in favor of authorizing the use of the town hall for the two evenings requested by Mr. Andrews, which is September 13th and September 27th?
Excuse me, before you vote. You know, I think $25 fee, even though it's little, it's kind of a slap in the face with this town and the difficulty that it's currently in. We have no town administrator. We have a wonderful interim. I wish I could grab him and not let him go, but inevitable that he has other places.
He has other places to be.
I do.
And this group sees that there's some changes that need to be made. $25 is nothing, but the point is, is that you're at, you have the audacity. And I'm sure they're gonna be, people are gonna be around to make sure things are cleaned up. And we pay, we pay someone to clean up the... There's an employee of the town that has a responsibility to clean a building on a regular basis. It's just, I just think it's a real slap in the face.
I think, Sam, it's difficult to say to one group who was just in here, you know, "We do need something to cover those costs," and then...
Do you charge everybody?
Yeah.
Everybody you charge?
At least everybody that I have been aware of using the building, some modest fee. We've waived it on an occasion for the group that comes in and works with the children from MOC?
Yeah.
This is, this is for the betterment...
Everything that you, the people who have come here this evening is for the betterment of the community. I don't dispute that.
So I think you should waive, I think, if it becomes a habit, but I think, and it's not the $25, I give them the $25 in the second, in front of you guys, but it's just the principle of the thing. I think this board needs to waive that fee for the first time. And if there's subsequent times, then we need to renegotiate.
Honestly, Sam, I'm more inclined to waive it for subsequent times than for the initial time. But that's me personally. Because I, you know, as much faith as I have in both of you to keep it tidy, you don't know who's showing up, you don't know...
Yeah, but we're not talking about both of us. We're talking about for the betterment of the town. The town is in deep trouble. We can't get one department to talk to another department. We wanna have a meeting, and all of a sudden, there's a fee that, because whatever...
The fee on the application is $100 for profit, $50 for nonprofits. So we're reducing that to try and help with this.
Very small.
Well, we, what we have to imagine is that the Circle of Song...
Maybe a dollar would be larger.
And the Circle of Song is in here doing a service to the town as well, and has for 40 years. And we've consistently charged them. When Christmas and Barry shows up and wants to do something else as a fee, when MOC, I think, is the only one that I've remembered on our tenure here that we've waived a fee for.
And that's a state-funded program.
Yeah, so I hear what you're saying, and it seems petty, but...
Yes.
It seems petty, but it is what the regulations in the town, you know, has before us to use town facilities.
Tell me, can we amend this at $20?
No, I'm not gonna take your $20 tonight, because I see that's what you're gonna do.
Because I want to give you $20. To stop, to stop this conversation, this back-and-forth conversation.
No, I...
I'll say one more thing on it, Sam. I think realistically, we could look at getting rid of the fees for the use of public property. I think that could be a good step for us. We would have to acknowledge what those extra costs would be, but I think we need to do that as a systematic change for all uses, not just for this one particular instance. So I'm actually happy to talk with you about that and see how we could actually make that change. At least make it free for nonprofits and reduce it for profit organizations. I just can't say to one group, "Yes, we'll reduce it..."
John, I understand. Believe me, I understand.
We're not trying to be difficult.
I understand exactly.
I have a question, actually. What does it cost to use, we just wanna have our meeting on the common?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Or not?
We don't have to really do much cleaning up after you.
Well, same potential for damage. Same potential for...
Listen, I'm done talking about this. This is silly now. You know it, and I know it. This is silly.
If you bring something up that has logic to it, then you don't wanna talk about it.
And I think we can...
I find that spiteful.
Well, you know...
And that's why it might be worth revising the system overall.
Sam, let it be known that Sam Lipson's gonna pay the $25. Neil is gonna deliver it to wherever it needs to be delivered. But we're gonna get that done.
Good. And September 13th is next week, so enjoy your meeting.
So next week, we'll figure out...
The reader board on the common would have been a great announcement place.
Well, you can... I've seen Mr. Lipson...
I have just understood so much today.
That's right.
I'm startled by what I hear. I just love this, but I hear you. Done.
Well, if someone were a better artist than I, because it took me a lot of time to put the sandwich boy out.
I know.
To develop it and to write all, change all the letters.
And then haul it around.
Oh, that's not, that's easy. That's good exercise. But if someone would make up a sign that I would walk around it with a sandwich boy, and it would say, whatever...
We can make it out of styrofoam.
Nice and light.
Nice and light.
And separate from this board, if you're open to it and willing, I would, I'm happy to share this with any Facebook group that I can. Okay, I will encourage everyone I can to get out to do this.
Now that we have the dates established, yeah?
Yep.
Put it out everywhere.
I'll get it everywhere I can think of. Just for me personally, not for the board's sake, but, you know.
Okay, so we have a motion to authorize the use of the town hall for the Barry Taxpayers Association on the two dates requested by Mr. Andrews, which is the 13th and 27th of September, at a charge of $25 for each evening. Fees to be discussed further subsequent to those two meetings being held. That's my guess. Those in favor?
Was that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
I'll even make that one. So we have a motion made, seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Andrews, you have your use of town property.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Neil.
Looking at personnel wage authorizations, we have two from the library trustees. Joseph Hood, the library director, going to a classification seven, step five, at an amount of $62,762.84. We have Catherine Murray, the Assistant Youth Services Librarian, full-time, going to an hourly rate of $17.97. We need approval of both of those individual changes in salary classification.
I would move for the approval of the wage authorization for Joseph Hood to $60,934.
62.
I'm sorry, yes, $62,762.84 per year. And for Catherine Murray, for, to $17.91 per hour.
Seventeen, seven...
Seventy-nine. I can, I can members.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to authorize the salary classifications to, for Joseph Hood, the library director, for $62,762.84. And Catherine Murray, the Assistant Youth Services Librarian, for a $17.97 per hour wage. Those in favor?
Aye.
Look like that's vote. Annual appointments, it seems like the last item on our agenda. Do you have a comment further than what we've already...
It's really just what we discussed where, you know, we are working on improving the system for it. Kind of ran out of time. And we're hoping to have that in place well before the next round of annual appointments come up. So I would approve the annual appointment list as presented.
We have a motion made, and I'm seeking a second to approve the FY '24 annual appointments list as presented.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded for the purpose of approving the annual appointment list for FY '24. Those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And with our thanks for those individuals stepping forward to assist.
The only thing still on the agenda, I know you briefly addressed it earlier, was the common park bench replacement project?
Yes. I just mentioned that we would like to bring something forward about that as part of our conversations with citizens about playgrounds and the use of places where there are park benches now that are just in terrible shape. They need to be replaced. And unfortunately, you know, once we decide where, we have to rip things out and we have to put new things in, and then we have to say, "Who's doing that job?"
So if we're doing, I'm assuming, either a request for proposals or a request for qualifications for those playgrounds, are you proposing to include the park benches as part of that same?
Probably not. I think those are...
Two separate?
Two separate.
Okay.
Okay, the people who are, who talk about playgrounds are into playgrounds.
Well, park benches tend to be part of playgrounds, too.
Yeah, and so I think what we're talking about up in the center of town and so forth is a pretty distinct, you know, we need X number of benches, and we need them to be installed.
Yeah.
And then we need them to be weatherproof and, you know, poly wood or whatever we decide to use.
Yeah.
Any further information or concerns that the board would like to...
Would move just a comment, item 5F, appointment of the election worker.
Oh, yes. I wish Ellen would have, you know, I'm sorry.
It's all right. We wouldn't miss that, because those people are hard to find.
Yeah, to appoint Florence Jean Reed as an election worker going forward. We need a motion and...
I'd move for the appointment.
We have a motion to move for the appointment of Florence Jean Reed as an election worker, effective immediately.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Greg, for bringing that to our table.
It was Sandy who reminded us all.
And I think Sandy, if we can text her and let her know to text Rick that we're going, we're ready to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Motion made.
We have a motion, oops.
I didn't get a chance for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right.
And I promise, it's not about the data.
Okay. We have an opportunity for public comment, and we welcome your comments.
Thank you. Flaherty Road, it's had a rough season. And it's actually dangerous. And I was wondering if Greg, for temporarily, might be able to get a hold of the DPW to put a road close sign there just for now.
Okay.
Because it's bad.
Okay.
Just down past Forrest Fessenden's place, once you're going down the hill, there's no way that you're gonna be able to turn around or even back up. That's how rough it is.
Okay.
I mean, it's over knee-deep and rocky. It's actually down to the ledge. You wouldn't believe it. And anyway, the water at one point was coming over the new culvert. We spent a lot of money and a lot of time and man-hours in 2018 to fix the culvert at the brook that's there, right in front of the Lincoln Parcel, which is town conservation. It's 27 acres. The town actually has 900 feet of frontage on Flaherty Road that was donated to the town in the 70s from Mr. Lincoln. And why we keep that road open, basically, is because of that parcel. It was our obligation back then that it would be open for conservation purposes. That's why we keep it open. But anyway, it's a dangerous situation. And very soon, we're gonna have hunters and fishermen from all over Massachusetts coming out to use those two new parcels the Mass Wildlife purchased in 2020. So there's gonna be a little bit of a kerfuffle down there. And if it's let go next, by, to next season, I feel as though we'll probably lose the culvert, too. For the spring runoff.
So I would suspect this would be a thing that we need to discuss next week at DPW.
I think so. I, it's, I know I drove down to the subway, the Quavon, that East Quavon Land Trust Trailhead.
Yeah.
It seemed to be pretty good to that point.
Yes.
Is it beyond that stretch?
Beyond that, there's an old, broken-down place where Forrest Fessenden used to live. It's unoccupied now. And just after that is where it starts getting bad. And from there, it's 900 feet of town road. And Mass Wildlife wants us to park in the first field on the left. But forget about trying to drive in there now. You won't get out, even with fire brush truck.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's the other issue that there are several taxpayers that count on the use of that right away, the town right away. I know it's more work, more money, but I figure if we let it go, it'll be more in the long run, because we'll lose the culvert that we already did.
Yep.
Well, that's probably another thing we can visit as we head to the dam, right?[1642.52]